And Chair, the time is 6:30. We are currently online on all social media services and everything is a go on this end. So whenever you're ready.
Thank you, David. Yes, it is 6:30 PM on Thursday, April 21st, this 52nd Earth Day on our calendar. And I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the West Hollywood Planning Commission to order. And I was hoping this was going to be the last time I have to read this, but I've just been informed not so fast. So here we go again. "In an effort to protect public health and prevent the spread of COVID-19 coronavirus, AV361 has authorized public meetings to take place via teleconference because state and local officials are recommending measures to promote social distancing. This planning commission meeting is being conducted via teleconference on the city's website and is also provided on a wide array of streaming media platforms to offer access to the public to the fullest extent possible. WeHoTV staff have confirmed that this planning commission meeting is currently streaming successfully on Spectrum Channel 10 and online at weho.org/wehotv. In addition, and as a courtesy, this meeting is also successfully streaming on the city's YouTube channel at youtube.com/wehotv and on Roku, Apple TV, Fire TV, and Android TV. WeHoTV staff monitor this broadcast on all platforms throughout the meeting and will notify the Planning Commission Secretary should broadcast disruptions arise. Please do not interrupt the live meeting by calling or texting the planning commissioners about difficulties viewing the meeting. In addition, you may call in to listen to this meeting by dialing 669-900-6833 with a meeting ID of 89403094819 and then press the pound sign. Please understand that internet speeds, device reliability, third-party platform reliability, and individual or personal technical issues are out of the scope of this broadcast. If you are experiencing viewing difficulties while watching this livestream, please reload the page or visit weho.org/wehotv to access our official livestream and to visit a list of other available streaming options and a guide to troubleshoot your connection. If you continue to experience difficulties, you can also call 323-848-3151. The West Hollywood Planning Commission acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrileño Tonga and Gabrileño Quech peoples." Moving on to item two, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Data, would you please do the honors?
Yes. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Commissioner Data. Mr. Gillig, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Lombardi.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Wall.
Here.
Commissioner Data.
Here.
Commissioner Carvalaro.
Here.
Vice Chair Jones.
Here.
Chair Hoop and Garner.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item four, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? A motion to approve?
Motion.
Second by Vice Chair Jones. David, would you please call the vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Carvalaro.
Yes.
Commissioner Data.
Yes.
Commissioner Greg Wall.
Yes.
Commissioner Lombardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas. Vice Chair Jones.
Yes.
Chair Hoop and Garner.
Yes.
And the agenda is approved as presented for April 21st, 2022.
Thank you. Item five, approval of the minutes. I understand we have a correction, Mr. Gillig.
Yes, I have a really simple correction. It's on page two and it's a simple typo. I misspelled the word Robertson, so we're going to correct that at the end of page two under item 10C. And that's all staff has.
Thank you. Are there any other corrections or additions? There being none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes with that amended? Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, second from Vice Chair Jones. And David, would you please call the vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Lombardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Carvalaro.
Yes.
Commissioner Data.
Yes.
Commissioner Greg Wall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones.
Yes.
Chair Hoop and Garner.
Yes.
And the minutes are approved as amended for April 7th, 2022 by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Gillig. Moving on to item six, public comment. At this time, I'd like to invite the public that if they wish to speak on item 12A, 1041 to 1049 North Martel, now would be a good time to speak during general public comment. You will have an opportunity at that time as well, but there is an opportunity at this time on item six, general public comment. David, do we have any public commenters?
Thank you, Chair. I receive no public comment items for this item. If anybody is on the platform with us that would like to speak, if you're calling in, just star nine for me to let me know you'd like to speak. If you're on the Zoom platform with us, just use the raise hand feature. And Chair, we are all clear for public.
Okay. There being no public comment, we'll move on to item seven, the Director's Report. Mr. Keough.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. John Keough, Director for Planning and Development Services for the city. Two brief announcements. One is upcoming city council item, and that is the item on SB 9 is scheduled for the first meeting in May. That's May 2nd for their action. And then the other thing I want to bring up is, as everyone knows, Robin Easton left us, and so we had started the recruitment process for a new manager for the long-range planning division. And in the interim, while we're searching for the permanent position, we've brought onboard Anne McIntosh to be an interim acting manager for that division to help us move forward. Some of you who've been around for Obama may remember her. She's worked with the city in planning and other areas off and on over many years. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions of our director? Okay, there being none. Item eight, items from Commissioners. Show of hands, any items? Vice Chair Jones.
Hi, thanks, Chair Hoop and Garner. I just wanted to note again for posterity and for the record that I will not be in attendance at our next meeting. 2022 is the year of the wedding, and I have a wedding to attend across the country on a Thursday. So I will not be in attendance. I will miss you all dearly. Just want to note that for.
Well, it's been a mutual missing because we just found out that May 5th has been canceled. So you get to get out of free jail.
Oh, fantastic. I mean, not fantastic. I will miss you, but I'm happy to not miss. Thank you.
Any other comments? Items from Commissioners. Okay, there being none, we'll move on to item nine. I'm sorry, Commissioner Data, did you have your hand up? Oh, sorry. Okay. Someday we'll have this in person. I swear we will. Okay, item nine, consent calendar, there is none. Item 10, 10A, 8951 Sunset Boulevard. It's a hearing to consider the request for an off-site sales of beer and wine in conjunction with approximately 869 square foot convenience store for the property located at 8951 Sunset. Mr. Gallo, I believe you're our lucky winner.
I am. Good evening, Chair Hoop and Garner, members of the Mission. I'm Adrian Gaia with the city's current planning division. Let me set up the PowerPoint for one second. Is that showing up?
Yes, we can see it.
Yes.
Thank you. "The request before you is for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption associated with a convenience store known as Tabachi. Tabachi is located on the first floor of a three-story commercial building with a pedestrian entrance off Sunset Boulevard. The building is a potential cultural, potential cultural resource. Parking is accommodated onsite at the rear of the building. There is also meter parking available in front of the establishment. A subject property is located on the northwestern corner of Sunset Boulevard and Hilldale Avenue. There are two other existing locations along Sunset Boulevard between Dohene Drive and Larrabee Street that sell beer and wine and distilled spirits for consumption off the premises, which is Turner's Liquor at 8850 Sunset Boulevard, corner of Sunset and Larrabee, and Gil's Turner's Fine Wines and Spirits at 9101 Sunset Boulevard, corner of Sunset and Dohene." "The convenience store has been in operation since 2010 and operates seven days a week from 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Tabachi will sell beer and wine during all hours of operation in addition to prepackaged food and beverage products, specialty tobacco products, and other merchandise oriented to convenience shopping and travelers' needs. There will be minor changes to the interior layout, including display racks and refrigeration spades for the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption. The applicant intends to use approximately 20 layer feet for wine shelves and 13 layer feet for beer coolers. Display sales and storage of alcohol will not be located in or within storefront windows or the entrance. There will be no changes to the exterior elevations due to the sale of alcohol. Review Coca-Cola cases since the business opened in 2010 shows no major citations or problematic operations of the business. The proposed use will not have an adverse impact to sensitive uses, which include religious facilities, schools, parks, or playgrounds, because most of them are more than one quarter of a mile from the site. While closer than others, West Hollywood Elementary School is located off of Sunset Boulevard with no direct pedestrian or vehicle access between the two uses. Furthermore, the sale of alcoholic beverages is not the primary functional business, and because the project has been conditioned to ensure that patrons are not sold alcohol who exhibit signs of intoxication or other inappropriate behavior. There will be no on-site consumption of alcohol on the premises, and the premises will be monitored and controlled by staff. The applicant understands the character of the neighborhood and is committed to help preserve such character through the responsible sale of alcohol. The proposed sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption at a convenience store is consistent with the general plan and Sunset-specific plan, which allow and encourage a wide variety of commercial uses and services. The request is also consistent with the criteria for off-site alcohol sales set forth in the City of West Hollywood municipal code. The use is not anticipated to cause a new or exacerbate any existing public nuisance in the vicinity. Further, the neighborhood serving use will be an amenity for the many residents of the area and in the surrounding residential neighborhood. Therefore, the use will serve the public convenience without causing undue negative impacts to the surrounding neighborhood or sensitive uses in the vicinity. The project has been conditioned to ensure that the operations of the site are consistent with the city's goals. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit for off-site sales of alcohol. Thank you."
Are there questions with staff? No questions? Well, I have a couple. You got cut off a little bit. Adrian, is this or is this building not a historical resource?
Intergovernmental resource.
Potential, so it's on the list? Okay. Because that brings up questions about the signage on this lovely Streamline Modern and the need for signage about no loitering and whatnot and cluttering up. I mean, I think all of us are fairly familiar with your average liquor store, convenience store, and the various postings, et cetera. Is there anything that constrains how those are done?
They would have to comply with the standards for any signage you want to propose or the conditions that require it. So we can add one that specifically stays set without the application of those signs.
I think that would be preferable at this time to make that the signage complies with anything hysterical that needs to happen.
I have a condition that we can add.
Okay, we can discuss that later, but we're on questions now. So that was my question about the historical. Was there a reason for cutting off your, you know, you go two blocks east, but many blocks west? Why was the cutoff at Larrabee?
That was the nearest off-site facility that sold alcohol aside from Gil Turner's was the one.
Oh, so it was just a radius to the next one, not an actual how many were within X square miles? I see. Okay. I'm trying to understand the statement that there's no direct pedestrian or vehicle access from the school. I mean, I can draw a straight line up from Harret to this site. So I don't quite understand that statement.
On Harret, there's a block is a dead end. You can't drive straight up. You have to go around to the major streets to get to this location. And then as far as pedestrian, again, you can't, yeah, let's say J-Walk. Then there's crosswalk is that intersection of Larrabee or the neighboring street. So there isn't direct access vehicle or pedestrian to this location from the school.
Okay. But if, okay, never mind. Items in the resolution 3.616. The training for all new employees have to be certified in the ABC training on responsible sales of alcohol. But then it says training should be offered to new employees on no less than a quarterly basis. Does that mean that someone could be working there for three months without training?
That would apply to all employees, just in terms of whether or not they're there for three months or they're long.
I mean, they don't have. Let me rephrase. Is there a requirement that the employee have received the training prior to their first day on the job?
No.
So that's where the three months come in, because if the training is only offered quarterly, then you could have someone working there for three months with no training. Is this standard?
This is standard condition for all applications, right?
Okay. Item 317. Permit is granted to a convenience store selling a variety of products. It is not the intent of this permit that the sale of alcohol be the primary products for sale. How is that a resolution?
You mean a condition?
Yeah.
The condition being that the primary function is not a liquor store. It's a convenience store.
Well, I guess the word intent kind of blurs that. And that's why I'm asking the question. I mean, to say to someone that's the intent, that's nice. But as a condition of use, it doesn't really, there's no consequences. There's no, it's just a nice thought.
I think the idea of that condition was to clarify the intent of what the business is supposed to be, because it runs with the land. But if you want to strike the condition, that's within your purview.
I wouldn't necessarily strike it. I would tighten it up. I would make it say what, you know, the condition is. And I think you get to it a little better in 318 with the number of linear feet. And perhaps they belong together as one, but that's maybe nitpicking. But as an intent, it's not really a condition. Okay. Item 322. The store may not sell products of abuse. Is that a defined term by the ABC?
That's from previous resolutions and what we've done for other off-site alcohol requests.
Was this in the La Cienega, the Chevron conversion?
This was in Target, Bevmo, and Smart and Final.
Okay. So it's a previously used term, but it's not a defined term?
Right.
Okay. Those are my questions. If there are no other questions, let's move on to the applicant. You will have 10 minutes for your presentation. Please state your name and city of residence, Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Chair Hoop and Garner and members of the Commission. My name is Jeff Seymour with Seymour Consulting Group. I reside in Westlake Village. First, let me thank Adrian for his input moving this request forward. On behalf of Arthur Margarion, the owner of Tabachi, we are requesting your approval of a conditional use permit allowing the sale of wine and beer at this subject site. Tabachi has been a successful business at this site since 2010. Admittedly, Mr. Margarion, re-envisioning his business is intending to reduce his tobacco sales in favor of the sale of international and domestic premium wines and craft beer. We have reviewed and accept all the conditions of approval set forth in the draft resolution, and we're here to respond to any questions the Commission may have in regard to this request.
Wow, under 60 seconds. I'm impressed. Questions of the applicant? There being none, let's move on to disclosures. Are there any disclosures this evening? Vice Chair Jones?
Thank you. Yes, I had a, I think, three and a half minute call with the applicant's representative prior to our meeting, and we discussed items contained in the staff report.
Okay, any other disclosures? There being none, let's move on to public comment. David, do we have public?
Thank you, Chair. I receive no public comment for this item. If there is anybody on the platform that would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If you're calling in, please star nine for me at this time, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And Chair, we are all clear for public comments for this item.
Okay. The applicant has five minutes to rebut the non-comment.
Well, Chair Hoop and Garner, I gave you, I think, a 90-second initial statement. I don't think I could do better than that. Only to say thank you for the consideration that you and the Commission are giving us tonight. We obviously look forward for your determination.
Thank you. In that case, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we will move on to deliberation and any proposed amendments to the resolutions. I'll call on you, I guess, in the order I see you on my screen. Commissioner Thomas? You're unmuted, but you're not unmuted.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, I don't have anything else to contribute. Would you like me to make the motion or?
No, I'm just asking. I'm just going to go through the screen. It's just easier because the hand thingy, you know, hands disappear and so. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Greg Wall.
Oh, I support staff's recommendation. I was encouraged by staff's report that this business has has been exemplary, and there haven't been any complaints over the years. And I'm perfectly comfortable approving the request this evening.
Okay, thank you. I will make one statement to be clear. To channel the late, great Gene Dobrin, the use goes with the land. So this, this request is permanent with the address, not with the applicant. So just want to make sure for the Commission and the public's awareness that that is what we are voting on tonight. Commissioner Carvio?
I'm okay with supporting this item also. I understand that, you know, with tobacco sales down and rents being what they are, that businesses need alcohol to stay afloat. And I don't see this as a problem for Sunset Strip, so I don't have an issue with this.
I like that. Keep using alcohol to stay afloat. Haven't we all been doing that throughout COVID?
I'm not intended, but okay.
We've got to have some levity in all of this. All right, Commissioner Lombardi.
Thank you, Chair, for the reminder that the use stays with this property and address. Don't really have anything to add right now. If there's desire to maybe make sure that the front window displays are maintained clear, given that the building, you know, has a historic aspect to it, I'd be open to that, but that's the only question or concern I have. That's really it. Otherwise, I don't see any issue here. And it seems like the applicant's just trying to kind of increase the variety of what they're selling and maybe, you know, decreasing the sale of tobacco and offering some wines is not a, you know, unusual request given that they're a convenience store. So I have no further thoughts on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Data?
Thank you. I'm happy to support this item. I think it's an appropriate use for this particular business. There is not an over-concentration of this type of alcohol sales in the immediate area. So happy to consider the condition that you mentioned earlier, Chair Hoop and Garner, about signage adhering to standards of Secretary of Interior in the event that this property is considered for the store, to be considered historic in the future. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Jones?
I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation. Again, it doesn't sound like there's going to be any, you know, extended discussion about it, but of course, I'm always open to hearing thoughts of my fellow commissioners. But it seems pretty cut and dry to me. This tenant has, you know, demonstrated their ability to run a, run a good business here in West Hollywood and on the Sunset Strip. And I will say too, I, well, I won't say that. It's not pertaining to the land use. I just, I think lots of businesses really struggled during the pandemic and having the ability to, you know, continue to bolster their sales, especially in the wake of what I imagine to be flagging tobacco and tobacco-related sales. Just makes sense to me. So I'm inclined to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jones. Yeah, I too, as all of us agree about alcohol keeping us afloat. You know, this is the Sunset Strip, and it seems like a logical adjustment to the business model for this business. And I don't have any problem with it. I would move to approve this with the amendment to the signage. And, you know, Isaac, perhaps you can help us with this to make sure that any signage is done in conformance with the historical nature of this building. The last thing I would like to see is, you know, flashing Budweiser signs on that Streamline Modern. So how to incorporate the required signage as well as any other signage in a, in a way that gives respect to the building would be the thing that I would like you to put into better words than I.
What about any signage in conformance with a determination of any historical significance, either state or locally?
Just real quick, I think Adrian had some language on that.
I did. I wasn't sure. So what I have.
Rather than on the flight, yeah. Go ahead.
The subject site is a potential historic resource. Any physical changes to the exterior of the subject site, including installation of signage, shall be consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards for the treatment of historical buildings and subject to the approval of a district or appropriateness.
Love it. Beautiful. I, so my motion is to approve staff's recommendation with the amendment as introduced by Mr. Gaio. And there is a second. But Commissioner Roger Carvio, is that a second?
It is.
Okay, very good. Is there any discussion? There being none, and David, would you please call the vote?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Lombardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Greg Wall.
Yes.
Commissioner Data.
Yes.
Commissioner Carvalaro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones.
Yes.
Chair Hoop and Garner.
Yes.
And the motion carries unanimously approving draft resolution PC 221462 as amended. And we didn't have that appeal.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. The resolution of planning mission. The resolution of planning mission just approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the City Council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from the state to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver fees. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Adrian, for clarification, were you proposing that to be 3.30?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to include that in my notes so that when I go to sign, I know that there's a thing to look for. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. All right, moving on. To item 11, new business, there is none. Item 12, unfinished business, 12A. This is 1041 to 1049 North Martel. This is a receive and file of the updated set of plans that were modified to conform with the recommendations for changes at our January 20th meeting. Commissioner Dada, I realize, go ahead, say your thing.
Oh, so I will need to recuse myself from this item as I did during the January 20th meeting as my employer is engaged on this project as a sustainability consultant. So I will plan to leave the meeting, and I did note that there is no meeting on May 5th, but that's been canceled. So I will see you all at the next.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to stay, I'm sorry to say, because we do have an item from staff coming up at 14A. So it will involve all of us. So if you would be so kind as to go have a beverage, and then David will call you when we reconvene.
Okay, sorry. I'll do that.
Thank you. Um, okay, so again, item 12A, uh, Mr. Castillo, yes?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hoopin Gardner. Good evening. Vice Chair Jones and members of the commission, Antonio Castillo, Senior Planner with the Current and Historic Preservation Planning Division. As you mentioned, Chair, this item is returning to you this evening as part of the approval motion from the January 20th public hearing in which the commission approved the project adopting resolution PC 22-1450. At the meeting, the commission directed staff to return to the commission with an updated set of plans that reflects all the revisions presented to the commission by staff memo leading up to the January 20th hearing, as well as those at the hearing itself. So today's staff report and the set of plans attached.
So Mr. Castillo is having some internet issues, I think he's.
I think we've got.
Going in and out today, so.
Okay, I think I'm back. I apologize.
Tony there for a minute.
Sorry about that, Chair. It's been, it's been an afternoon with technology here. So as I was mentioning, the today's staff report reflects the staff's determination that, that this is the updated set, as discussed at the hearing on January 20th and approved by the Planning Commission. So that is the conclusion of my brief presentation on this item. We do have the applicant in the Zoom as well, their architect and the project, the project manager representing the item, if you have any questions.
Very good. Thank you. And just for clarification, this item has already been reviewed and approved by planning. They were not reopening the hearing on the project itself. This, this item is purely to review the modifications made to the plans and to make sure they are in conformance with the direction that, that the commission gave staff and the applicant. So this is only about the modifications made as outlined in the January 19th memo from Mr. Castillo as approved by the commission on the 20th. Um, and just for further clarification, I did have conversation with Mr. Rosen. Because my concern is that there were two sets of plans now out there. But there is, Mr. Rosen, what was the paragraph? It was like 2 dot 23 or something?
Uh, yes, Chair, there is a, it's, I believe, 2.3 that lays out the formal action taken by the commission on the 20th. And I think your summation of it was correct, that the project's been approved. And part of that approval was the updated, as, as you mentioned, the updated plans that have been submitted as part of this agenda item based on that January 20th hearing.
Correct. And 2.3 makes it very clear. My concern was that there's two sets of plans out there and that the new plans got, you know, missed, and that the, the original plans were the ones that went through building and safety, et cetera. But I think 2.3 in the resolution does cover this. So with that, uh, are there any disclosures? Nope. Then let's go to the applicant. Um, the applicant has 10 minutes, um, to make their presentation. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners. My name is Damon Polk. I'm the Senior Project Manager for EAH. I am a resident of Los Angeles, and I just want to say thank you for allowing us to come back and present our development to you. I'm available for any questions. And also, our Vice President of Real Estate Development, Denise Went, is here as well to discuss anything with regards to EAH. But we are just thankful to be here and finally have our project through the city of West Hollywood. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? There being none, David, do we have any public comments?
Chair, I receive no public comment requests for this item. If there is anybody on the platform that would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If you're calling in, please star nine, and we'll give you three minutes to speak on this item. And Chair, we are all clear for this public item also.
Mr. Polk, you too will get an option to rebut the non-comment.
No comment.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I will close the public comment portion of this public hearing and move into deliberations. Are there any comments, corrections, changes at this time? There being none, I'm just going to plunge in and move to receive and file, as is the staff's recommendation. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Um, discussion? There being none, Mr. Gillig, would you please call the vote?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Carvalero?
Yes.
Commissioner Dada? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dada will be recused. Commissioner Greg Wa?
Yes.
Commissioner Lombardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chair Hoopin Gardner?
Yes.
And the motion carries by six eyes, noting Commissioner Dada as recused on this item. It is a receiving file.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 13, excluded consent calendar items, there are none. Items from staff number 14A, planning managers update. Jennifer, I understand you have all kinds of goodies for us, but let's make sure we get Commissioner Dada back on the Zoom.
Like, looking at all the squares. Oh, there he is. Okay.
There we go. We're full Grady bunch right now.
Right, even blue and everything. Um, okay, so I'm going to start with the special item. So we received a request today, and I'm going to just sort of read off the information that I have. We received a request to have a representative engage with the consultant that we hired.
Representative from Planning Commission?
From the Planning Commission, yes. Um, so the city manager has recently engaged a consultant to develop a comprehensive community safety and wellbeing strategy. The city has contracted with Strategy Corp, a professional services firm based in Ontario, Canada, to guide us through the strategic planning process. Strategy Corp's team is experienced in working with local and regional governments, police organizations, and the nonprofit sector to develop and implement community safety efforts. The project will include the creation of strategic goals, prioritization of new and existing community safety and wellbeing initiatives, and an implementation plan for moving forward. Our goal is to develop a single integrated strategy to help streamline efforts and optimize our community's safety and social service ecosystem. So their, their consultant will be conducting 60-minute focus groups with representatives from all of our boards and commissions and advisory boards. I'm sorry, boards and commissions includes advisory boards and the Social Justice Task Force. We're asking each commission and advisory board and task force body to select one representative to represent, I'm sorry, to participate, not represent the commission, but to participate in a focus group to provide perspectives on service gaps, risks, barriers, and opportunities for improvement in the city's community, safety, and wellbeing landscape. So that's the spiel. Um, so tonight, we just want to get one individual.
There were some dates. I think there were some dates in that email.
There are. I'm getting there.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, yep. So we're looking for one, one individual to participate in these focus groups. The focus groups dates are proposed for May 11th and May 16th.
Is that an answer or?
It's, I think it's just one focus group. And so there's many different dates and times. So there are three sessions, one hour each, on May 11th, and three sessions of one hour each on May 16th. And then there's office hours that are open to anybody from the advisory body on May 12th. So if, if anyone's interested, I'll provide all of this information in writing and all of the links and everything. But I just wanted to get your feedback and see if there was somebody who is interested in participating.
So in short, it's a one-hour commitment to participate in a public safety focus group, and they'd like one of us to participate. By a show of hands, is there interest by any of our fellow commissioners in participating in this process?
One hour.
Commissioner Carviero, okay, and Vice Chair Jones, okay?
I defer to Commissioner Carviero. I was just going to say, if no one else wants to do it, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, um, then by unanimous consent, Commissioner Carviero, we expect a full 10-page written report after your one-hour inflection. Thank you for your service. I really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, let me write that down because I'll get off of this and be like, wait, was it? Good thing it's recorded. Okay, moving on, we've got upcoming meetings. So I'll just go through what's on the upcoming agendas. May 5th, we don't have any items. It is canceled. May 19th, we've got a capital improvement plan, which is just a general plan consistency finding for this council's adopted capital improvement plan. 8730 Sunset Boulevard billboard is currently scheduled for May 19th, as well as the Zone Text Amendment for Alcohol Takeout. And then on June 2nd, we have scheduled a 100% affordable housing project at 1201 Detroit and an amendment to the Robertson Lane project and specific plan. Both of those meetings, May 19th and June 2nd, will be on Zoom. Um, we will not be going to in person until June 16th. The reason that we are delaying that a little bit more than we thought is because June 2nd is the preparation for Pride, and there will not be access to the chambers. So rather than going to in person and then back to Zoom, we felt that that would be very confusing for people trying to participate. And so we wanted to just keep it on Zoom and be consistent until we get past that date into the June 16th meeting. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to myself or to David Gillig. But that's the current plan. Moving on to Designer Review Subcommittee. Now, we have a meeting next week. That's April 28th for 8850 Sunset Boulevard. It's a mixed-use project at the location of the Oz and the Viper Room up on Sunset. That one, and then on May 12th, we're looking, um, May 12th is still typically.
Sassy.
The sassy meeting, but it looks like there's no sassy items. So we would request to reinstate the Designer Review Subcommittee meeting and have 8500 Santa Monica Boulevard. I believe those, I know both of those are also going to be on Zoom. So the 8500 Santa Monica Boulevard is a mixed-use project at the corner of La Cienega and Santa Monica. And then the next Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee, the sassy meeting, would be June 9th. And we're looking at potentially having 8590 Sunset on that meeting. That's a little ways out yet, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay. And I have confirmed that I will not be here on the May 26th if there were to be designer reviews.
Thank you, Chair, and we've noted that on our look ahead so that we know when we go to if we have to schedule something.
Thank you. Okay, any questions of our planning manager? Right, item 15, public comment. David, do we have some spontaneously occurring public?
Thank you, Chair. I receive no public comment requests for this item. If, as usual, if anybody's left on the platform with us that would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If you're calling in, star nine for me, and we'll give you three minutes. And Chair, we are all clear for this public comments.
Um, oops, I did something bad to my Zoom. Um, there we go. Then let's move on. Item 16, 16A, Commissioner Comments, 16B, Subcommittee Management. Let's smash them all together. Show of hands. Vice Chair Jones, you get your free pass on non-attendance on the 5th. Commissioner Lombardi?
Thank you. On Subcommittee Management, I just wanted to note, I think, 8850 Sunset Boulevard is planned for Designer Review Subcommittee next meeting. That's the one that I recused myself from last time. I just wanted to make sure that we have a quorum. Since I will not be in attendance, just wanted to note that.
I, thank you. If that's the one for May 12th, Jennifer?
That is April 28th.
April 28th, that's next week. Okay.
Yes.
So it's just you and me, Commissioner Carviero. Okay. No, that should be fine. We should have a quorum. Thanks for the heads-up reminder.
Of course, that's all. Thanks.
Any other items from Commissioners? Well, if not, then I will officially adjourn this Planning Commission meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be May 17.
Nineteen.
19. Um, at 6:30 PM, same Zoom time, same Zoom station. Four of us have never seen the dais. We're going to make this happen in the year 2022, I swear. Be safe out there, everyone. Happy Earth Day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Everyone, good night.
Good night.